Twenty-two council meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for the meeting and other expectations.
Yes, good evening, members of the public. For those of you who are listening virtually, your mics will be muted by default just to guarantee good listening, good listening for the audience. If you have questions during the meeting, please put your name and your address into the chat, and directions to do so are also in the chat. You will have five minutes to speak for public input. If you have, if you have comments during the privilege of the floor, again, put your name and your address in the chat, and the council president will call on you at the time. You have three minutes to speak on the privilege of the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated during the meeting. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted times. At this time, I would like to begin with the invocation. The invocation this evening will be from Pastor Lee.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads to the gracious heavenly Father. We thank you for the opportunity to work on the city's business. We ask that you will help us to work in unity, to help uplift and to prosper the city of South Bend. Lord, we ask that you would look all across this nation in this time of division. We ask that you would bring us together as a people, as a country, as a city. And we ask, God, that you would look on the family of Reema Harris, the correctional worker that was shot on Sunday in a drive-by shooting in her home. We look on her family, and we ask, God, that you would allow those who are guilty to be found. And we just ask that as we, as we work on the work of the city, that you would continue to make South Bend a safe place and a great place to live. All of these things we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, Clerk Jones, would you mind doing the roll, please? Councilmember David. Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Wax. Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President Niskoski.
Present.
A present. Thank you. At this time, we do not have any, a report on the Subcommittee on Minutes. We do not have any special business. We do have reports from city offices, and it's an update on the utility assistance. Is Eric going to be here with you as well?
Eric might be with us online, but I'll give the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Denise Lynn Vredel, Chief Innovation Officer for the City of South Bend, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. Does the Clerk's office have a copy of the presentation by any chance? Yes, yes. I'd be happy to get started, though, just for the sake of time. So, this update is about the Utility Assistance Program enrollment status and current and ongoing city efforts to increase participation in utility assistance. So, just as a reminder, the, this work is actually a part of a bigger collection of projects that is what we call the Assistance Portfolio at the city. The mayor proposed about $600,000 of American Rescue funding be used for this purpose, and increasing UAP enrollment is one of these projects. And really, the, that portion of American Rescue dollars is about ensuring that of the state and the federal and the local programs that are set up for vulnerable households, that we're looking at the numbers of enrollment. Many of these are undersubscribed, incredibly undersubscribed at certain points. And so, in addition to really paying attention to how the city uses the American Rescue dollars that are coming in via the federal government, we want to make sure that our community is fully leveraging those programs that are already on the table outside of those American Rescue dollars. So, that's really the spirit of this particular portfolio of projects. So, for the Utility Assistance Program, just as a reminder for background for the public, in council, in 2021, at Mayor Mueller's recommendation and with council's vote, the Utility Assistance Program, formerly known as CAP, increased and became more generous. And so, for instance, the threshold for enrollment for that program used to be 60% AMI, average median income. Now, it's 80%. So, a new tier was added, as well as the amount of discounts that each household can get at every tier was increased to up to $25 for the lowest tier. And so, in addition to making those changes, several process-related improvements were made to the Utility Assistance Program, including detethering it from the state LIHEP program, just because the LIHEP program had a different income threshold, and with council's decision to make it more generous, we had to bring that administration of the program into the city, run by 3-1-1 currently, and then create an application management system and a process around how all of that would work. And previously, the process was quite burdensome. There were many documents people had to submit, usually took conversations with several people, ping ponging back and forth between real services and the city. And it wasn't an ideal process, and we spoke to several residents who'd been a part of it. We figured if we have to bring administration into the city, if we have to change it anyway because of these policy changes, we might as well make it better. And so, the city adopted several best practices. We made the form digital. It's 10 minutes that you could do it yourself, or you could call 3-1-1 and do it over the phone. No documents are required. And that is because instead of requiring the documentation upfront, what we do is actually perform randomized audits on the applications on a regular basis, because a lot of the data shows federally that very few people lie on these types of assistance applications. And so, really, a best practice in this field has started to be at reattestation, no required documents, just for the sake of improving enrollment and improving the process for people that have very little time. And so, that, in addition to several other process improvements, resulted in the new Utility Assistance Program that was rolled out at the end of last year. And this program, previously, the CAP program under Public Works, enrollment was at about 1,200 for the city. Now, over the past six months, we've worked to get that number up to over 1,800 as of the end of May. And actually, it was my team's goal to get that to be closer to 2,000 by the end of, the end of June. And so, we really have a goal throughout this year as a team, in partnership with utility, partnership with 3-1-1, in partnership with council and all of our community stakeholders, to really increase enrollment in the Utility Assistance Program. The max, we estimate the maximum number of households eligible for this program in the city is probably around 15,000. That being said, even when we've engaged with some residents, households at that higher tier, 80% average median income, many of them will say, "No, thank you," to the program, or say, "You know, I don't think I need this right now." And so, we think maybe even a more realistic target might be something around 12,000 households at maximum to get into the program. And so, what we're doing, this is the opportunity, and you can actually skip a little bit later into the presentation. And just for, yeah, and so, as part of this program, what we've done is we did a pilot at the very beginning of, towards the end of spring, it was pushed back because the colder weather, I think we all experienced, made boots-on-the-ground work a little bit more difficult in this season. But in February, we started to do training and recruiting for this work. And so, what we did is we got groups of frontline workers together and facilitated cross-training. So, folks from the St. Joseph County Public Library, real services, the Economic Empowerment Team at the city, and also our friends at the St. Joseph County Public Health Department. We all got together and trained each other on each other's programs. This is how you sign up. These are the common pitfalls. This is one I want you to refer a resident to me directly, you know, and so there was a great exchange of ideas and really good cross-training that happened. And we expect to do something like this, you know, every few months, to make sure communication is flowing well between all those different groups who are working with households to get them connected to various services, whether they're related to health, or utility assistance, or broadband assistance, the list goes on and on. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. And so, one thing my team is doing, in addition to piloting outreach efforts, we're also trying to be very data-driven about this work. So, we have picked the priority programs, utility assistance being at the top of the list, to monitor enrollment for throughout the year and set monthly targets for enrollment across the city, and also track at a more granular level by census tract and by, you know, by district, how many people are signed up, about how many people we estimate are eligible per census tract, and which census tracts are most prime for outreach, or for events or other programming, where we see fairly low, fairly low uptake, but high eligibility numbers. So, a few things that we have learned so far. So, so far, we've conducted a pilot, late spring, early summer, with one community canvassing partner, and we've learned a lot. We're a part of a few city networks that are all doing the same thing. And a few things that we've learned, awareness is key. And so, we're going to be increasing those communication touchpoints with residents via social media. I'd love to partner with council as well, as you can communicate with your constituents. And then, also, that trust and verification is key. So, you know, the city, the model that we found in South Bend and other cities are using, which I think is a good one, is not necessarily using city workers. We don't actually have enough city workers to do this, but instead partnering with community organizations and building their capacity, and asking them to do this work and hiring them to do this work. And that's a route we still want to go in, because we think it's a good partnership model, and also it allows hyper-local organizations who have the trust of their neighborhoods to do the work they're already good at. But, that being said, trust and verification is key. So, we've learned a lot about the type of equipment that we should buy for these workers. Now, we've equipped them with city IDs. You know, we also want to make sure that those nonprofit groups have the equipment they need branded with their organizations, as well as city equipment to wear, and the right materials to share with residents when they go door-to-door. And these are all the programs that the city is interested in upping enrollment in throughout this year. UAP is at the top of the list, but there's plenty of other programs skated forward. There is the child tax credit for nonfilers, the Affordable Connectivity Program, run out of the Federal Communications Commission, the local citywide classroom South Bend program that gives free and discounted broadband to households with school-aged children, LIWAP and LIHEP, and then emergency rental with the county, LEDSafe South Bend. And so, we can kind of breeze through this section a little bit, because I verbally went through it. But, these were just, as in, just some background, this was on the left, the old way that CAP worked, and then the new way the Utility Assistance Program is working. It's just a faster turnaround, better communication, shorter application, and clearer ownership and points of contact for residents. You can go to the next slide. It's just showing the improved process. Next one. So, these were the challenges, again, with the old program, that again, was replaced with the new Utility Assistance Program at the end of last year. You can go to the next slide. So, these were all the changes that were implemented for utility assistance at the end of 2021. My team built an application management system for this. We send notices out, 3-1-1 also calls and provides reminders for people who prefer to receive phone-based reminders instead of email reminders. There's a Spanish application in writing, but you can also call and fill out your application over the phone in Spanish, if you prefer, with the Spanish option for 3-1-1. And then, there's automatic re-enrollment if you reattest your income. And so, that reattestation comes automatically by email every year. Again, 10-minute, mobile-friendly form, no required documents. So, this year, we're really working to increase signups, explore more opportunities to bundle more city applications into the UAP process. That way, it becomes more of a one-stop shop, as opposed to, you know, filling out lots of different applications for lots of different programs. So, again, at the very top, we estimate there's about 15,000 households eligible for this program now. Citywide, it actually varies dramatically by census tract what subscribership looks like on eligibility, but citywide, it's 12%, and that's too low. We need to make that number bigger. So, we're hoping that if we have our current capacity, we estimate that we can get this number up 1,000 very easily by the end of the year. But, if we do what we'd like to do, we'd like to hire more community organizations and contractors for canvassing and phone banking throughout this summer and in the winter, and partner with them to help us get these numbers up. And the higher, the better. Just to give you an idea what this looks like geographically across the city, it's 12% across the city, but based on census tract, that can vary wildly. We have some census tracts, you know, in the near northwest that are actually quite high. So, adjacent to downtown, we have a census tract, almost 60% of eligible households are signed up for UAP, we estimate, 20 or 30% in others. Then, there are others, kind of on the outskirts of the city, that are much lower. Keep in mind that some of the far outskirts of census tracts, only a portion of them are in the city, and so that's why those numbers are so low. But you can see, like, those numbers vary wildly across, across the city. So, a couple of things that we would like to do, we've identified the areas of the city that we really want to double down outreach in. And again, that could look like lots of things, our canvassing team, events, social media outreach, all ideas are welcome, because this is a high priority for the year. And then, also, you know, we want to think about how we can, you know, target these tracts, how we can listen to residents and see if they're having any issues with the application process. The benefit of the Utility Assistance Program, unlike LEDSafe South Bend or other programs, is that we control it entirely. So, if there's an issue, we can change it, and we can have that open line of communication with the administration and council and work together to fix it. And actually, I should check in with my team to see the updated numbers on this, but I think we're likely at around 15% now, because we were on track to do that at the end of May, and it's now almost the end of June. My team's goal is, at our current capacity, is, you know, contacting at least 70 households per day. And we find out that at least 10% of households enroll in that contact, and then several others will reach out after the fact and then get enrolled. And so, you know, we've been trying to, like, set targets and really estimate, like, how many people we need to meet our goals on this front. So, the big takeaways, we have a really good idea of where we should go, canvassing, community partnerships, events. You know, we, our goal is to contact 4,500 households at least by the end of the year, and hopefully, 1,000 more households will be signed up in UAP. That being said, those numbers assume our current capacity. And so, my civic innovation team is working with LegalNow to put a call-out to different community organizations, and that should be up soon, to ask them to contract with the city and actually help us with these efforts. And they would be compensated for their time, they would get supply budgets, and they would, we'd be able to pay them by their, depending on what they're doing, by phone call, by household. And so, we're really excited to release that, and I'll make sure to share that with council when it's up. So, how council can help? Feedback and ideas are very welcome. You can tell us what's going on in your district, if there are any issues, if residents have questions or concerns that keep coming up, because we want to address them and pivot. This is sort of, you know, kind of a new way to think about how to enroll people in a program like this, and it's very important for us to get enrollment up as quickly as possible. You can also help us get the word out about our summer canvassing contracts, and that opportunity might appeal to some local organizations and some nonprofits that you might work with. So, we'll make sure to share that with council when it's up. And then, also, just help build trust and combat fraud. We haven't seen any fraud in the community around utility assistance specifically, but we have nationally in other cities, other peers have communicated issues with fraud when it comes to, say, the American Connectivity Program. So, say, people calling up and saying, "I work for so-and-so, I'm signing you up for American Connectivity Program, the Affordable Connectivity Program, tell me your personal information." And, you know, so, like, building trust and making sure we're doing the right things to communicate trust and making sure that we're doing this correctly, and then we're also catching instances like that are going to be very important as we do this. So, that's, that's it. I'm happy to take questions and/or ideas from council.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation here.
Yeah.
We will start down at this end of the, with Councilman Davis, if you have any input or question.
Just have one question. Thank you for your presentation. I keep hearing a common theme about needing people to talk more and to give up more of a reason why these things are not working well for them, or what may be working well for them as well. But we keep sending them to a computer. A computer doesn't instigate this, what we're having right now. There has to be some more creative ways of speaking with neighbors. And now, excuse me, and that's, I think, what was hitting against when we were talking about earlier, what, you know, we're building this strong IT network, and we're, you know, we're doing so much with the IT, but it almost keeps a divide between residents, people, and city government. So, I just, I don't know if that's necessarily a question or not, but I just keep hearing a common theme reoccurring over and over again. You know, we need to hear more, but here's a computer. We need to hear more, but use this link. We need to hear more, here's this app, you know?
Yeah, and, oh, absolutely.
Go ahead, I'm done.
No, thank you, thank you, Councilman Davis. And that's very true, and this is sort of why we're, we've realized that, you know, you can't just invest in the technology of this, which is why we do want to invest in the on-the-ground operation and outreach team for this work. Also, why we're having the 3-1-1 call is an option, too. And, I mean, I think we all know the digital divide in the community is very real, and that's something that we're also combating in other projects that we're doing. But there are lots of other ways that we can, you know, besides just sending people links, right? These canvassing efforts that we're discussing today, events, like signup-a-thons, inviting people to events, and we can think of, I'm sure together, we can think of even more creative ways to really leverage, like, the strength of South Bend, which is the human infrastructure, to get people to sign up for these programs.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. It seems to me that you've been listening. A lot of the complaints about the online applications is that they're too long and they're too cumbersome, and it sounds like you've addressed that, and that, I'm really glad to hear that. And I also commend your efforts to do the door-to-door, because I think that is the best way to reach folks, and I'll be thinking about other suggestions to get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you for...
Councilman Wax?
Thank you for your presentation. I always love hearing about lowering or reducing bureaucracy and red tape. To the point where they don't need, applicants don't need to provide any documents, how does the city verify that they're eligible?
Yeah, so, when someone submits an application, either by phone or online, they do have to check. There is a lot of, there's a lot of legal language at the end of the application that, you know, people have to verify, like, this information is correct, but then also, I acknowledge the city can follow up and ask for more documentation and verification. And so, that's where the audits come in.
Are there audits taken?
Yeah, our first, we're going to do them at least annually, but the first one will be scheduled either at the end of this year or at the beginning of next year.
By asking for documentation?
So, yeah, we'll sample, we'll do a randomized sample of all of the applications that have come in, and it'll be like a pretty, a pretty big randomized sample, just to make sure we're getting representative group, and then we'll, we'll request documentation and then verify.
Okay, and to the, this program is being funded through the additional fee, the water bill fee, the UAP fee. As enrollment goes up, it's tapping further into the fee that's collected. Do you know where that threshold hits, so that we would, the fee would need to be raised to keep the program existent?
Yeah, we've, we've created a calculator of sorts on that. I don't have it in front of me, but I'd be happy to follow up with council to let you know what that threshold is, because that's something we should all monitor. We're pretty far from it, just to, just to be clear. We're quite, we're thousands and thousands of people, households away from, from the threshold, but I'd be happy to give that number to council.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner, do you have any questions for Denise?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on, then, to Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for giving this update. You've, at least on our INT Council Committee, have been giving various updates throughout the past year. I just love the fact how... I just love the fact how you've been able, and we learned a lot during COVID and the Lead Program when we were rolling that out and some of the, the barriers there. And just the way your team and, and interns who worked on this just helped to streamline all these applications and, and also maximize. It's often the same, similar populations that, that benefit from all these assistance. So, when they're applying for utility or rental assistance, to make sure also they're applying for broadband, citywide classroom. So, thank you for all your work in that.
Yeah, and, and that's, it's not just UAP that these, this team is driving towards, yeah, exactly.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. We know that these are very uncertain times for a lot of people. With the cost of gas and cost of groceries and all of those things. It's wherever someone can save money, who may not be as fortunate as most, it's very important. I, I love the fact that you guys are doing the digital stuff because I found that, you know, people are pretty tech savvy, pretty much now. It's a link, it's a, you know, and if you can get to it and, and make it simple, then that helps people get enrolled. But also the fact that you're doing the door-to-door, going to houses and having conversations with people. Because there are still a lot of people who are not as tech savvy as, as most people are. I was very interested in hearing that you, you guys partner with, 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 with social services groups. And can you explain that a little more of how, what organizations are you guys targeting? And, and what, what would require that organization to be considered to be part of this?
Anyone who's interested frankly can, can be a part of it. We started with the St. Joseph County Public Library because we found a lot of librarians have become social workers, you know, for all intents and purposes, just, just in their branches, helping people sign up, helping people navigate the computer. So, libraries have been, you know, a big partner for us. The, the new community health workers are amazing and they've been really interested in hearing about the programs the city is pushing. And we've also been very interested in hearing about their programs so that, you know, if someone successfully signs up for UAP, we can also refer them to community health workers, right? Or point them in the right direction on something else they might be interested in. Real Services as well has been an excellent partner and they've been great at training our teams, how to get people to refer people to them, sign up for some of the state and federal programs that they administer. And then other, there are many program officers at the city, especially in DCI, who've really taken care to kind of train all of those stakeholders. How, you know, how their programs work, what the biggest challenges are to their programs, what they can control. You know, the, the Lead Team, for instance, in DCI, trained all of those stakeholders on how the Lead Safe Program works. And, you know, told them who to refer them to at the city if, if someone's interested, so. But to answer your question very shortly, like any, anyone really, anyone who I would say has interest in signing up neighbors, it doesn't have to be a part of their job. But we, I'd be happy to open, happy to open up those events. We do them kind of lunch and learn style at the TRC and so we can make them public for people if that's of interest.
And, and how much assistance can, would the average person receive?
So, for the utility assistance program, for the lowest tier, you could receive up to twenty-five dollars off of your bill. And an average monthly bill at the city is about eighty dollars.
Thank you.
Councilwoman White?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It's so encouraging to see how the program has really developed to the point that we have it now. I think when we first started these discussions, CAP, and that we had not only Real Services, but also the Water, the Water Department representatives were there as well as individuals from the state that kind of walked us through because it was a new venture and making sure that we had to adhere to a number of expectations as well. So, it's, it's great to see where we're at now and, and looking at, you know, when you gave us the percentages, it really gives us an indication in terms of the challenges that a large portion of our citizens that they're facing. In terms of meeting some of just the bare minimums that we expect to have for all of our citizens. But also, I would like to say, as you begin to look at partners, you know, of course, work very closely with the district representatives because they know the districts better than anyone. And also the neighborhood associations, the churches, so that there is a number of ways in which to get the information out. And I think that you had made mention some of the key areas that we have to be very mindful. It's the way we communicate, but also the trust. And so the individuals will feel comfortable in sharing personal information as well. So, I thank you for your presentation. It was very enlightening. And I'm glad that we have moved past the CAP program now into what we have that is really, has been developed by the city and is for our citizens. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, and I would just echo it, all of my fellow council members have said, I think this is a wonderful program. It's going to help a lot of our residents. I love seeing the communication between the county health department and the city. Those are our new community healthcare workers. I believe they're here from a grant that they received. And also getting the forms in Spanish, so we're doing outreach to the community in many, many different ways and at many different levels. So, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing as well.
And thank you for the presentation assistance, Clerk Jones.
Okay, so we're going to move on with that. I'll entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole. Second. It's been moved and seconded. I believe since we have one person that's virtual, we have to take a roll call vote on every vote. So, Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed, if the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be on time. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two a second reading?
Twenty-one, twenty-two. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common coun... You have to accept the substitute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got to read it first.
You got to read it first and then accept it.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for properties located at eleven-oh-two, eleven-oh-six, eleven-ten, eleven-fourteen, eleven-eighteen, eleven-twenty-two, eleven-twenty-six, and eleven-thirty, McCartney Street, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I'd like to make a motion to accept substitute bill.
Second.
All right, Clerk, Clerk Jones, will you give us a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, this substitute bill came before the zoning and annexation committee this afternoon and comes to us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present? And I asked you to share your name and address and share us key points regarding this bill that's before us.
Angela Smith, I'm not the petitioner, but I'll get you started. Zoning administrator with offices located on the fourteenth floor of this building. The petition in front of you this evening is for the properties outlined here on the screen. The substitute was to incorporate some additional properties along McCartney in order to take a comprehensive look at the majority of this block. As you can see, we have a mixture of U1 Urban Neighborhood One and I Industrial Properties. Originally, this was going to be a request just for the Transformation Ministries, which is the existing building in which they were going to rezone one parcel to allow for some drainage related to their site. But they're really part of an overall development that's looking long-term, both with them and a neighbor, at how this block may develop. And there may be some additional needs for them in the future in terms of parking or drainage. And so, we wanted to work with them to make sure we could handle that all in one aspect tonight as opposed to coming in at a piecemeal or doing any kind of spot zoning. So, the request is to go to NC Neighborhood Center District. This is lower than the original request of I Industrial. It was all properly advertised, both the locations and the zoning for this. This would allow for the first zoning classification in which a community center is allowed and would allow the developers to rehab the building and an adaptive reuse of the building that is there. This is a image from 2019 before the property owners or the current petitioners had an opportunity to clean up the site. But you can see the existing building that's been there is an old industrial building that could really use a new life. This is the property along McCartney. This is a better representation of how they're maintaining the property now. The site plan includes adaptive reuse of the building with some minor additions, the addition of some parking and some drainage. And as part of their petition, they've agreed to do a higher intensity kind of buffer along the west side than what is required by the ordinance. So, they're providing fifteen feet and some additional screening above and beyond what the ordinance requires. Everything else meets the NC standards with the exception of the transparency which the Plan Commission granted a variance for. And I'll show you a little bit more about that. So, this is the building, the rendering as proposed for the site. The request for the transparency was along King Street. While it's technically a street, this is a dead-end road with an industrial property across the street, so it's not a very active street. It will primarily just serve as access for this particular property. This comes to you from the South Bend Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
The petitioner is here as well.
Oh, the petitioner's here. Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Deborah Hughes. I'm the project civil engineer. Thirty-two twenty, Southview Drive, Elkhart is my address. The, as Angela said, the property is an old uniform factory that'll be repurposed as a community center for Transformation Ministries, who currently has another facility on Portage Avenue. So, they'll be expanding into this building and completely transforming the outside of it to, to be a lovely addition to the neighborhood. As Angela said, the property's currently zoned industrial and the properties to the north on McCartney are zoned residential. So, instead of zoning everything industrial, she suggested a neighborhood center zone, which is a good transition between the industrial property to the east and the residence to the west. So, I think this will allow the petitioner to do what they want to do with the building, with the additions, and also to be properly respectful of the neighbors. With me online is Cory Lance, who's the Executive Director of Transformation Ministries, and he would also like to address the council.
Hi there, Cory Lance, six fifteen Cushing Street, South Bend. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Extremely excited about this project. We've been working with youth and families, particularly sixth through twelfth grade, for the last thirteen years in South Bend, located on the, on Portage Avenue, fifteen nineteen Portage. And super excited to be able to buy this building a year ago with the hopes to be able to work with kids younger, as early as even newborn age, all the way through young adulthood. So, our current space will eventually turn into an early learning center for zero through five. But this space that you're looking at here would be for students K through young adulthood. So, we do a lot of just kind of highly relational wraparound support and service for students. Extremely excited, as I live in this community, to see what this means for, for our neighborhood. One of our students who went up, went through the program, who is now on staff, was nearly brought to tears a year ago and we shared with her that we bought this building and we were going to be investing four and a half million dollars into it for decades for this community to enjoy. And so, we're thrilled about it. Our, our parents and families and neighbors are thrilled about it. We've, we've done a lot of listening sessions for the community to, to share their input and their ideas and they've been a part of the process and that's been extremely important for us and significant in this, in this journey. So, love to take any questions that you might have for us, but extremely excited about the project overall.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I asked no one had any questions. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Did, did you have a question? Okay, well, I asked a question. I asked if anyone had a question twice.
My question, sir, you just finished speaking. Why is South Bend so attractive to this type of work?
You know, I don't know necessarily why South is attracted to the work, but...
No, no, why is, why the work that you do so attractive? Why is South Bend as an environment is so attractive to the work that you're trying to do?
I think it's, it's personal for me. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood after graduating from Bethel College thirteen years ago and we just fell in love with the neighborhood and really became neighbors before we started any programs. And through the time of starting programs, just saw, saw little needs, heard needs and started doing things for the young, young children in, in our community. So, attractive to us because we fell in love with the people and they became our friends and, and, you know, people that we, that we enjoyed, both benefiting from.
Anybody else? Any other questions? All right, if, if not, we'll go to the public hearing. Clerk Jones, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor, online or in, in the chambers?
I don't see anyone online or in the chambers who has expressed an interest to speak in favor. However, I do have something that I would like to say during this portion. What I would like to say is I actually live down the street from Mr. Lance and remember when they moved on Cushing, which is right across the street from me? And I've watched them over the years, how they have worked with the children in the neighborhood. And they started in their own house and they started preparing their house to work with children in the neighborhood. And I don't know if they do foster parenting as well, but I know that they have a passion and a love for this work. And to see them move, not actually move their house, but to see them move into a larger capacity such as this is definitely beneficial to the neighborhood as well as to our entire community. So, I support this and I am glad that they are doing it and that they were attracted to this, to this area. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the chamber or in, online that would speak in opposition of this?
I don't see anyone in the public expressing interest to speak in opposition of this bill.
At this point, the, the public hearing for Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two is now closed. Councilmembers, you can make statements if, if you would like. Councilwoman Davis?
Yeah, you know, I asked that question for, for a reason. Again, I'm going to go back to this. It's what we're investing in here in this community. I don't think that there's anything wrong with what's going on here. As a matter of fact, one of the pictures have one of my family members on, in it. And I've heard about this program and how great it is. I got that. But what I really want to focus in on is that, at one point in time, I don't know what the number is now, South Bend was home to, well, let's say, half of the land used in South Bend. Like fifty percent of the land use was given to nonprofits. And nonprofits usually have the mission of developing, helping people, families, et cetera. I, I'm just trying to really figure out how South Bend gets to a level of discussion where our industry is, is just that. It's not, it doesn't promote the industries of tax-based expansion jobs. Um it's not um, it doesn't promote um the industries of tax-based expansion jobs. Uh nonprofits uh usually only, you know, employees um under ten people usually. Um and again, there's nothing wrong with it. I I applaud it. But as a a council member, looking at tax base, looking at the amount of money uh that we have to use and deal with on a regular basis to continue to supply city services, um pave streets, uh build uh city infrastructure, et cetera, um that number is continuing to go down. And that has a lot to do with the taxpaying entities versus the non-taxpaying entities. Um South Bend uh is uh is it's um brandy itself on uh these sorts of social service programs um that uh really doesn't elevate the quality of life of this residents here or even helps the business community uh itself. So I, you know, I asked that question because I want to know the numbers. Um uh the the folks who are not going to uh public schools or not getting educated, the folks that are involved in domestic violence disputes that steer them to these sorts of programs or others. Um th- there's a different story there. There's a different narrative there. Although these programs are great and they're awesome, they exist for a reason. And those reasons are usually negative. And I would just be interested in hearing that other side of that conversation. And I hope that we can begin to have that conversation if we're interested in having that conversation. I think it would be healthy to have that conversation. Um but you know, um I digress.
All right. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you. Um Cory, I'm looking over the brochure and I'm looking at the services that you provide for these kids. And it looks to me that you touch on pretty much all of the recommended anti-violence programming that is recommended for communities that are experiencing the violence that we are. So um I'm excited that you're expanding and I want to thank you for the energy that you're putting into our community. And um I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued efforts to improve South Bend. Good luck. Wish you much success.
Vice President Niskoski?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you so much for the vision that you have for the community, especially um the part of town that you're in. I believe they used to call that down in the hollow, right down there in that area town. But um yeah, it's 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 wonderful that you and your wife are are dedicating your yourselves to our children um because they are the leaders of tomorrow. So I commend you for your work and I definitely support the bill.
Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
Thank you. I'll 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 just echo um my gratitude uh that other council members have relayed. But um I I I came to know of your work, Mr. Lance, through my husband when he was at the Juvenile Justice Center um uh many years ago. And so it's been exciting to see your work uh with with the youth in our community um really deepen. And um and I I just want to thank you for for your investment in our community, but in the most important assets that we have in our community, who are um our young people.
Councilwoman White?
I would just like to echo the comments of our, from our fellow council members, but also to share that on a personal level, I'm aware of a number of young individuals who have shared with me that they would not go to any other place but your current location. They have shared with me uh the values that they've learned in terms of self-esteem and just how to make good decisions. So I really thank you, your wife, and of course, your staff for working because when you work with our young people, it is a commitment and has to be one of passion and love, and you have to have consistency. And you have shown that you do have that consistency. And so again, I thank you for continuing to not only invest uh in our, with our youth, but also uh with our city as well.
And I will sum it up. I have had the pleasure of seeing um uh Transformation Ministry start from the beginning thirteen, fourteen years ago and them taking a condemned building and transforming it and making it a beautiful space for our kids to come in the first district. And then for now, them to take another condemned building uh or a building that had been abandoned and to be able to have a vision to turn it into a place where our young kids can grow and and learn. I deal with violence every day, and a child doesn't come into this world violent. They're taught that. And so if they can learn violence, they can also learn conflict resolution. And I have firsthand seen the important work and the important mission that Transformation Ministry does over in the first district. And so I'm excited that God has blessed you guys for these opportunities. Everybody can't do a four and a half million dollar project, but you all are doing that by faith. And because you believe in the kids and the kids believe in you. And if we can't raise our kids, then what is, what else is there? And so they provide a safe haven for our kids and and I cannot commend you. I cannot commend you any higher than just saying that thank you for the vision and we look forward to all of the great things that are going to come out of that. And so with that all being said, I will now enter, oh, I'm sorry. Troy Troy Warner? Would you like to have something to say?
Thank you.
That's it, just thanking. He's very short-winded tonight, amen. All right. I feel like I'm at church right now. All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two. I'm sorry, sup- substitute bill, um twenty-one dash twenty-two.
I move that uh substitute bill goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right, Clerk Jones. Um would you please call the roll for substitute bill twenty-one dash twenty-two?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Substitute bill twenty-one dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you give uh Bill twenty-two dash twenty-two a second reading?
Yes. Twenty-two twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, alley east side of South Bend Avenue between Corby Boulevard and Campow Street.
Is there a committee report?
Um yes, Chair. The, this was given a favorable recommendation from the Public Works and Property Vacation earlier this afternoon.
Right. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Yes, sir, James Randolph, um thirty-four fifty-four Douglas Road, South Bend. So our request today is pretty straightforward. We're asking for the vacation of the alley that runs east-west um between uh Campo, Campow and uh Corby Avenue right there. Uh if you go to the fourth, you can see our site plan right here where we're going to live on the site. Um and the current alleyway runs east-west right underneath that five right there. We're looking to vacate the ver- most western part of that that goes on to South Bend Avenue.
Council members, do you have any questions? All right. At this time, we'll go to... All right, at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Uh Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash twenty-two?
I do not see anyone from the public that's wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Is there, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition of this bill as well.
Council members, um is there anyone that would like to make a statement regarding Bill twenty-two dash twenty-two? If not, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to send to the, to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill twenty-two dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable rec- recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you give Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two a second reading?
Twenty-five twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a committee report?
Um yes, there is, Chair. This was heard in Personnel and Finance this afternoon. It was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. Is there a petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Thank you and uh thank you, council members. Uh Dan Parker, City Controller, my office is on the twelfth floor of this building. Uh Bill twenty-five twenty-two is the first of our two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. This is the budget transfers bill. So uh this doesn't increase nor decrease the the annual budget. Uh it simply moves money between divisions within a single department um or between cost categories uh within a single fund, between supplies and services, uh personnel and capital. Um most of the items on here are relatively small and there are uh explanations for all of the transfers in included on the attachment to the bill, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that council might have.
Council members, do you have any questions for the petitioner? I'll start here with council. Any other? We have no, no questions. Um at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public that's expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of twenty-five dash twenty-two?
There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements regarding uh Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two? Seeing there none, I will now entertain a motion regarding uh Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Move to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
The motion has been, been, um, there's been a motion in second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill uh twenty-five dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you give uh Bill twenty-six dash twenty-two a second reading?
Twenty-six twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year twenty-twenty-two. Uh one million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars from the Parks and Recreation Fund, number two zero one. Nine thousand dollars from the Economic Development State Grants Fund, number two-ten. Ninety thousand dollars from the Gift Donation Bequest Fund, number two-seventeen. Nine hundred thousand dollars from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund, number two-twenty-six. A hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Code Enforcement Fund, number two-thirty. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars from the COVID-nineteen Response Fund, number two-sixty-four. Five thousand five hundred and seven dollars from the MVH Restricted Fund, number two-sixty-six. Four hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars from the IT Innovation Three-One-One Call Center Fund, number two-seventy-nine. Fifty thousand dollars from the Police Federal Drug Enforcement Fund, number two-ninety-nine. Four hundred fourteen thousand eighty, four hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund, number four-zero-four. Three million seventy-five thousand dollars from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund, number four-zero-eight. One million two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars from the Professional Sports Convention Development Area Fund, number four-thirteen. And one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, number six-one-one.
Is there a committee report?
Um this was heard in the Personal and Finance Committee this afternoon. It was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right, Mr. Parker is the petitioner. He's present. I ask that you state your name and address and share key points for us regarding this bill that's before us.
Thank you, Chair. Um thank you, Dan Parker, City Controller, office on the twelfth floor of this building. Um so this is the second uh quarterly budget adjustment bill, the additional appropriations bill. Um as we did in committee this afternoon, I will just briefly share um some of the the highlights uh of this. Um this, these requests um for additional appropriations um and then ask uh Executive Director of venues Parks and Arts, uh Erin Perry, to elaborate on on a few more. Um in addition to sharing on the screen, I did email a copy of the bill to all the council members and I do have paper copies as well. So if anybody wants paper copy, I have those as well. Um the, in terms of uh the additional appropriations requests, to just kind of uh start at the the top and run through some of the larger items, they are categorized into our four normal categories of unanticipated expenses, things that come up during the year that we weren't anticipating, uh supported by new revenue, uh which are uh grants and other donations that the city brings in um and we're asking for permission to spend. Capital projects, which are usually larger items that span multiple years um and and are usually funded with capital types of dollars. Uh and then administrative items, which are generally speaking, um accounting types of cleanup and and generally things that have been appropriated in the past. Um starting at the top with unanticipated expenses, the the first sort of group culminating in about one point five million dollars in in appropriations requests uh has to do with uh vehicles and equipment that were planned to be leased during twenty-twenty-two. Um we, in putting together the twenty-twenty-two budget plan for the repayment of the debt service on this lease for these vehicles and equipment, but uh didn't actually put into the budget the purchase of those vehicles and equipment. So um this is, this appropriation doesn't add new equipment. These are all the things that we were planning on buying and we have planned for in the forecasts for the next five years to repay. Uh the debt service on these equipments are in these pieces of equipment, uh but we would just ask uh council to appropriate these dollars to actually allow us to purchase them um and utilize the 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 lease proceeds um that we got from issuing the debt um to to buy those specific pieces of equipment. Uh I'm going to skip over the next few regarding uh outreach and and programming and park engagement, uh River Lights and the Morris One Hundred, uh and allow uh Erin Perry to to speak to those in a little more detail. But moving on into supported by new revenues and and highlighting a few of the appropriation requests, um looking to appropriate some funding out of our gift donation and bequest fund uh to spend some money to have green improvements and and uh improvements specifically uh to promote uh positive energy consumption uh in people's homes. That's, those are based on grants that we received um as well as uh an endowment that we received from the Milton Trust specifically for those uses. Um and and looking to to bring that and and operationalize those dollars. Um also, uh with this request here for two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, uh looking to operationalize the um a a grant that we re- received uh in conjunction with the South Bend School Corporation, uh the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Grant that that the city received um to expand public wifi uh throughout the city. Uh and so again, that's why that's supported by new dollars. Those are dollars that we didn't uh plan for in the original budget and we're now asking council to appropriate to um to continue to 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 uh operationalize those dollars. Uh moving down to capital projects, um there is a request for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to replace some network switches, uh that is IT hardware, uh that had reached the end of their life. Um again, this is similar to the equipment we talked about earlier. This will be funded by a capital lease, so we'll repay this over the next five years. Um and so this is just the purchase of those switches um in to 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 replace the the IT equipment that is outdated. Um there's also a request for nine hundred thousand dollars to uh support the EPA master plan that the city executed with the Environmental Protection Agency. that the city executed with the Environmental Protection Agency regarding Bex Lake and LaSalle Park. Um, this complements or supplements, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars that is already in the city's 2022 budget. Um, so for a total of one-point-seven million dollars for, um, the, this particular remediation project at Bex Lake. Um, and as we mentioned during committee this afternoon, this is a fifty-fifty split in cost with Honeywell. Um, and so the city will pay for this, uh, upfront. Uh, the project was actually just recently awarded contingent on funding, uh, which we're asking to be appropriated tonight. Uh, the next request on there is three million dollars for additional funding for street improvements. Um, as we talked about in committee this afternoon, uh, this is additional funding to complete and actually expand upon our roads plan for 2022. So, uh, because of, of the cost of everything, as we're all feeling, is, is increasing, um, we actually do need a, a, a little bit more funding to complete the roads that we were planning on completing just during 2022. Uh, so two million dollars of this three-million-dollar request is to help offset some of the cost increases that we've seen in supplies and, and, uh, professional services, to, uh, continue to pave those roads and stay on track with the rebuilding our streets plan. And then also, in the close to two years or, or over two years since the rebuilding our streets plan was put together, uh, some roads have deteriorated a little bit faster than we anticipated, and so we're asking for a million dollars to add to that plan and actually address some of those higher, uh, priority roads, um, at, at this point in time, and so that's what that three-million-dollar request is from. Uh, that's funded from income tax, um, and just recently, the city, along with all local units in Indiana, received a supplemental local income tax distribution, um, that totaled roughly one-point-seven million dollars. Um, so a portion of this will be funded from that supplemental local income tax, uh, distribution, uh, and then a portion will come from our reserves. Um, the next request on there is one-point-three, just under one-point-three million dollars for, uh, the Kowalewski Stadium scoreboard, dis- display replacement. Um, the, this is one of the required upgrades, uh, that Major League Baseball has put, uh, in place in order for South Bend to maintain our franchise, um, and is funded by our, uh, PSCDA, or Professional Sports and Convention Development Area Tax Fund, uh, which is a tax that was put in place to capture some of the revenue that was previously go-going downstate, uh, put in place last year, uh, and specifically supports capital enhancements at facilities like, uh, Kowalewski Stadium, uh, at Four Winds Field at Kowalewski Stadium. So, uh, it's specific to this use, um, and again, is, is required to, to keep, uh, the, the franchise, uh, the Cubs franchise here in South Bend, um, to replace that scoreboard. So, we're asking, uh, to, to appropriate that, uh, this evening as well. Uh, and then the last few items under administrative items, the most significant one there, uh, is three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars related to a, uh, CDBG, uh, grant that the city received in 2020. We actually received, uh, several million dollars in that grant, um, and the, the, these grants take several years to actually, uh, program out and operationalize, and so this was previously appropriated, and we're just asking for reappropriation to be able to spend those dollars now. Uh, with that, uh, if, uh, Erin Perry would like to step up and address those few items that I skipped over, uh, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions on the items that I went through.
Thanks, Dan. Erin Perry, Executive Director of Venues Parks and Arts, offices at two-nineteen South St. Louis Boulevard. As we discussed in committee, uh, the three items that are, are probably somewhat new to the council, uh, this time around, um, are as follows. The first one is related to, uh, Parks Outreach and Engagement. Uh, we put in a seventy thou- seventy-nine thousand dollar request, um, of which fifty thousand dollars is allocated, uh, towards what we're calling Parks Outreach and Engagement Team. Uh, as we're seeing unprecedented usage in our parks, uh, we want to ensure that they remain, uh, safe, welcoming, and comfortable for everybody who comes in to them. Uh, we have, uh, done a, a small pilot program over the past few weeks, um, with the help of Pastor Lee and the SAVE team, uh, to see what those out-outreach and engagement team members could do. Uh, we're seeing some initial successes there in terms of, uh, just again, helping, um, navigate the, the large crowds that we're seeing in our parks. Uh, the remaining approximately twenty-five thousand dollars of that request goes to additional programming. Uh, we're calling it, uh, hotspot or pop-up programming. We're modeling it after a, a program that we, uh, virtually visited in Sacramento, California, that's been really successful, designed to augment, um, our kind of consistent, uh, or already in place programs that happen, um, in and around our community centers or athletic leagues or summer camps. Uh, this, this type of programming is designed to go immediately where, uh, young people might be gathering at any given time. So, uh, wildly flexible programming. The second one is related to the River Lights. The River Lights are now, uh, just over seven years old. We installed them as a part of our, uh, SB-one-fifty sesquicentennial celebration. That was a word I got really good at saying back then. They had a seven-to-nine-year life expectancy, and, and here we are, right at, at just past year seven, and they're beginning to fail. In fact, we had a thirty-five-page audit, um, about, uh, that revealed about twenty-five percent of the lights aren't functioning currently. Uh, before they all go dark, that's kind of our, our city's, uh, open sign. Uh, we want to make sure we're replacing those and repairing those so they're, uh, usable well into the future. And the final request deals with the Morris One Hundred Festival. Uh, that'll be coming up, um, on September thirtieth and October first, a free community, uh, festival to, uh, serve as the end cap of best week ever, as well as kind of the grand reopening after the Phase One renovations that happened at, at the Morris. Uh, this is all supported by, uh, donations that the Venues Parks and Arts Foundation has fundraised, um, just being reimbursed to the city. Thank you, council, for your consideration.
All right, councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Do you have comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Perry, um, I meant to ask you this in committee. The, in terms of the, the ballpark scoreboard, what's the life of, what's the life of a scoreboard, or this, this new one that we're going to get?
Yeah, the last one was installed, uh, just before Andrew Berlin, uh, purchased the team, so just over ten years. It's in its eleventh year right now. And, uh, if anyone's visited the ballpark lately, in fact, I got to see, uh, Councilmember Tomas Morgan out there on Friday. I pointed out, the, the scoreboard's starting to become pixelated, and portions of it are beginning to fail, so, again, we want to be proactive here before it all goes out. Um, the idea that'll be replaced this fall, right after the season.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Perry, has there been another conversation, and, and I know this usually goes to redevelopment, so, uh, and I'm sure if it has happened, you will be there. Um, the agreement between the city on parking, uh, with this particular stadium, Four Winds, um, has there been a, a revision of that agreement? I know that we were allowing them to take a hundred percent of the proceeds from parking around that stadium and, and around that stadium. I was just wondering, was there any reworking of that to, so the city can begin to recoup some of those dollars?
Yeah, I, I can't speak right off the cuff to some of those agreements with the redevelopment owned lots, I think you're referring to.
Yeah.
And so, I, I'm sure the administration can research that, and Caleb's team could probably get back to you on that one, so. I can tell you the revenue share agreement with the stadium itself, but as it relates to parking, we could probably get back to you.
Anybody else? Uh, any other questions? Troy Warner, any questions?
No questions.
If not, we're going, we're gonna go to the public, uh, public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of twenty-six dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill twenty-six twenty-two.
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak in favor? Okay. All right. Uh, is there anyone, um, from the public in the chamber on, online that would like to speak in opposition of Bill twenty-six dash twenty-two?
There is no one virtually that is expressing interest to speak in opposition of Bill twenty-six twenty-two.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill twenty-six dash twenty-two is now closed. Um, councilmembers, you can make statements. Are there any statements? Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you. I did, um, make this statement during committee, but I would just like to reiterate, I want to thank Mr. Perry and VP for their immediate response and finding potential solutions to, um, the concerns and the needs around the crowds that we're gathering in the parks in the evening. And the pop-ups sound like a much safer thing than having one of your employees there at night by themselves. Hearing that made me a little nervous, so I'm glad to hear that we have a program now, so that, um, we'll be, uh, connecting with the youth that are in the parks, making it a positive thing, and hopefully making our parks in the evening much safer and more inviting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm back. I, I, yeah. Uh, you know, she just triggered something in my mind. Um, when I was talking about, about the societal issues of the things that are supported by organizations that try to rid our, our, um, our, our, our environment of those things by, uh, undergirding our kids with, um, proper socialization and education, et cetera. Um, that is probably more of what I am saying with, um, a park that needs extra, um, support. The support is coming from people that the city is hiring to go out and to make sure people know how to behave themselves in the park. Where I come in on this discussion is the idea that people that go to other parks that's opposite of where they live at, side of town, if those other sides were given that same sort of investment, maybe they wouldn't visit those other parks and misbehave. There has to be some parity as it relates to the development in different areas of the city. I'm not saying that this is a bad idea. I'm not suggesting that by no stretch of the imagination. But what I am saying is that when people leave one area to go to another area for services, being rendered by a public entity, the idea is that they're gonna go over here and behave. Well, no, that's not a reality. If folks are allowed to stay in their own environment, the environment that they are, or they feel safe in, the environment that they, um, are comfortable in, then maybe some of those things that are impacting a said, uh, Howard Park doesn't happen anymore, or it happens a lot less. So, I'm just talking about parity. I'm talking about the ability of this city being able to, uh, spread about its great riches in areas that need it a lot more than other areas. Not that Howard Park didn't need it. It did. But now you have a situation where we're calling in people that you're hiring, uh, to say, hey, you can't come over here and behave like that. We need you guys to, you know, chill out. If those members of our city were where they came from, or where they live at, or where, you know, where they feel the environment that they, that they're home, chances are, those relationships will already be there, because the people that they live around, they already know. Chances are that they understand the environment, and they understand the tone, the dialect, and the language of the area. So, it's not necessarily a transference, it's just being able to undergar- undergarage each area of the city, if possible, with the same sort of resources, uh, to maintain order.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would, uh, my comments would be, uh, again, with the situation with, uh, with the parks and, and everything. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for choosing engagement instead of law enforcement and utilizing people from the community that, that they don't go and tell people what to do. They just engage them in a good way and make them, a, a, and, and, and engage them in a positive way, and they're being able to, to show and to teach us. This is a pilot to figure out how do we really engage our young people. Our young people love being in our parks all over the city, and, and so it gives us a chance to get dialogue and talk to them and find out. So, um, you know, some places in, in our region don't engage, but we decided to engage, and, and it's, and, and the issues have diminished significantly. And that's the positive engagement that happens when people, when people actually take time to talk to the kids and get to know who they are, so.
Oh, I just want to add that just recently, we had our last meeting with our youth council members, which was last, um, Thursday, and we had, um, um, a little engagement in regards to, let's talk about your, your neighborhood. And each, uh, youth was, uh, asked to kind of share their experiences and how they view their neighborhood and community, and what was missing, and what they would like to see. And one of the key, um, areas that came up, and they were debating among themselves as well, and they discovered that all of the neighbors, I mean, all of the communities are not the same. They have different experiences and even different amenities. But what came out of that conversation is that we've got to engage our youth, and we have to listen to them and give them opportunity to share their, uh, perceptions, uh, their insights, and, uh, they are very thoughtful, and I know that they would welcome that opportunity just to have a conversation and to be heard as well as engaged.
With that being said, is there, uh, Troy Warner, are you, do you have any comment? No, okay. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-six dash twenty-two.
I'd like to move that we send twenty-six dash twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Um, Bill twenty-six dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Whew. Clerk Jones, will you read, will you read, uh, Bill twenty-seven dash twenty-two?
Yes. Twenty-seven twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number one-zero-eight-one-six dash twenty-one, which fix maximum wages of Teamsters, Teamster employees for calendar years two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and two thousand and twenty-four to add a provision for a city residency incentive.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is Chair. Um, this bill was heard in the Personal and Finance Committee this afternoon and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
Is there a petitioner present? Mr. Parker, one more time. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points.
Uh, thank you Chair. Uh, thank you councilmembers. Dan Parker, City Controller, office on the twelfth floor of the County City Building. Um, so this bill, uh, twenty-seven twenty-two, uh, is the amendment to the Teamster Salary Ordinance, um, to add a city residency incentive for Teamster employees of a thousand dollars, um, for the calendar year 2022. Um, you'll remember, back subsequent to the completion of the negotiation with the, the local Teamsters Union, um, in the fall of 2021, uh, council added a city, voted to add a city residency incentive for non-bargaining employees, um, of a thousand dollars. And so this extends that, that city residency incentive to our Teamster employees as well. Um, this, uh, comes to council following a process, uh, whereby the administration engaged with the, the local union and signed an MOU by the, the, the local and the Board of Public Works, uh, back in late May, uh, to request that council make this change to the, um, to the salary ordinance to add this residency incentive. I shared it in committee this afternoon, but it bears repeating that, uh, the, of the four groups of employees, uh, in the city, non-bargaining, police, fire, and Teamsters, uh, Teamsters actually has the highest percentage of in-city residency. Um, and so this will extend that city residency incentive, uh, to, to that group of people. So, uh, roughly fifty percent, just under fifty percent of Teamsters live in the city, within city limits. Um, with that, I am happy to answer any questions on this bill.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Seeing there's no questions, because we did a lot of talking in committee, um, we'll go to the public, um, hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone looking to speak in favor of Bill twenty-seven dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone from the public, um, either in the chambers or, um, online wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one from the, uh, public wishing to speak in opposition as well.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill Twenty-Six Dash Twenty-Two is now closed. Councilmembers, are there any, would anybody like to make any statements? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill Twenty-Six Dash Twenty-Two.
I make a motion that the bill be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill Twenty-Six Dash Twenty-Two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Two a second reading?
Twenty-eight twenty-two, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number One Zero Eight One Seven Dash Twenty-One, Which Fix Maximum Salaries and Wages Of Appointed Officers And Non-Bargaining Employees Of The City Of South Bend, Indiana For Calendar Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two To Amend The Two Thousand Twenty-Two Maximum Salaries For Four Full-Time Positions.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. That was heard this afternoon in Personnel and Finance and was sent to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present once again?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Dan Parker, City Controller, Office on the twelfth floor of this building. I am going to just, as I did in committee, share my screen, which is just a summarized version of the detail behind this bill. This bill amends the two thousand twenty-two non-bargaining employee salary ordinance for the six positions listed on the screen. The first four positions are members of the App- Applications Team within the Department of Innovation and Technology to increase the maximum salary cap for those four positions by twelve percent for the first three and by eight percent for the final one. And then the final two positions are Neighborhood Program Specialist positions within our Department of Community Investment. This bill proposes to increase their salary cap for both positions to sixty thousand dollars, which is a ten or eleven percent increase and to standardize what is, what was a small pay variance between those two under the current two thousand twenty-two salary cap. I will let Denise Lynn Riedel, our Chief Innovation Officer, and Caleb Bauer, our Executive Director of Community Investment, come and talk about their relevant positions and and the reasons behind. But I did want to just address something that Councilmember White, you said earlier during committee in a comment, which was a good comment, and I should have said it during my presentation, is that these are salary caps. So this is not actual salary increases for any one individual. Actually, less than, fewer than ten percent of city non-bargaining employees are actually at their salary cap. Most city employees are below their salary caps. And that's to allow for some negotiations, some merit-based increases year over year, those kinds of things. So this is an increase to the cap, not to actual salaries. So thank you for that comment earlier, Councilmember White.
I'll sue you my bill.
All right. So with that, Denise, if you want to come in and talk about your positions.
Hello again. Denise Lynn Riedel, Chief Innovation Officer for the City of South Bend with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. I know we discussed this this afternoon, but I'll just review just some of the market numbers that are driving the proposed increases here for the four positions in my department. The four positions, again, are Application Developer, Application Developer Two, Manager of Applications, and then Director of Applications. So for Applications Developer One and Two, these are the Application Developer One is the entry-level applications position in the city, and Two is the sort of incremental bump for more experienced developers. Right now, we look to create a financing, financial staffing agency, CFS, for the market numbers that tell us, you know, what the average application developer, engineer, accountant, director of applications in our market currently makes, what the average is, what the sort of first quartile looks like around the twentieth percentile of the market. We know that for an application developer in this market, that twentieth percentile floats at about, I believe, eighty, eighty thousand dollars. And so basically, these increases will get us not to that point, but will certainly get us a lot closer. And so we are seeing twelve percent, proposing twelve percent increases for those application developer positions to get Level One to high sixties and get Level Two to mid-seventies. For the Manager of Applications and then the Director of Applications, we benchmark to the Lead Application Developer title in our market, which CFS estimates the twentieth percentile for those types of positions, managerial application developer positions are in the mid-nineties, mid to high nineties. And so, again, we're not going to hit that benchmark. And, you know, we're the public sector, and so we don't compete with the private sector. But that will bring the Manager of Applications from mid-seventies to mid-eighties. And then our Director of Applications from low eighties to almost just under ninety thousand dollars. And I'm very hopeful, again, salaries and everything, especially in government, but I'm hopeful that this, plus, you know, other benefits, good culture and and mission, will be able to attract and retain the right talent to give us some more power, some more continuity and retention on this very important technical team. They're the ones that really drive software implementations at the city. They help with software integration. So say we get something new for solid waste or we get something new for Public Works or for DCI. They're the team that integrates everything with our CRM. They automate a lot of processes at the city. They do a lot of important reporting at the city. And so they fuel a lot of that magical automation work. A lot of work goes into it. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. But I'll, should should council ask questions now or should I turn it over to Caleb Bauer?
We can have Caleb come and and then then if there's any questions, then whichever one of you want to answer.
Thank you, Caleb Bauer, Acting Director of Community Investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Before you, is a proposal to increase the salary cap for the Neighborhood Program Specialists and Neighborhood Program Specialists-led positions. These are really the positions that administer a number of important programs for the department. The Neighborhood Program Specialist administers the Community Home Buyers Corporation program and will be asked to administer the Expanded Home Repair Program utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds. And the Neighborhood Program Specialist-led position administers the federal-led grant program. We're requesting requesting the salary cap increase as we have seen some turnover in the Neighborhood Program Specialist position and wanted to bring these positions in line and also allow for some merit-based increases to improve retention as, in both cases with these positions, they do require a level of subject matter expertise that we've found has taken a substantial amount of time to train new persons in those positions. And so this would help increase retention. Thank you.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for them? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you. My first question has to do with the increase in the IT, the Applications Developer Positions on down. Isn't it true that IT allocates out a number of their expenses? So this is going to be a concern of budgets for other departments, not just IT? So how do we make that work with the set budgets that those other departments currently have?
Yeah, absolutely. So Councilman Hammond points out that my department, as an allocation department, means our budget is comprised of the budgets of all other departments. And so with all of the application developers, there's an allocation equation that goes into them that is essentially weighted more towards the larger, more complex departments. So PD, Public Works, and DCI in particular. And in particular, departments that, for that budget year, have a large, a large implementation. And so those departments really get the most services from the Applications Team. And so that's the the equation for all of the salaries gets bundled together and sort of allocated out to those departments in particular. That being said, we're looking at kind of a marginal, probably, like, at most, you know, a couple of ten thousand dollars that are going to be spread over a couple of departments and and to see that actualize the bump for this particular year. But you're correct. It's going to get allocated out to different departments.
Just to add very slightly on it, the reason why this is not accompanied by a budget request is because there are vacancies in IT, including a vacancy in one of the Applications Developer positions. And so the existing budget for that department is able to accommodate the increased salaries. And so there will be no increased budget this year, and then it will be planned for in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, and I did bring this up in committee, is I do not ascribe to the fact that people stay at their jobs or leave their jobs strictly because of money. And I understand that we want parity, especially in director positions. We want to pay people a comfortable living wage. I'm all for that. But I also think that we need to follow through on the survey that was requested and confirmed would take place with the employees so that we know exactly what is happening in the departments. There are a couple of departments where we have seen some pretty significant turnover. And being a former business owner, I know that training is one of your largest expenses. So we are spending a great deal of money, training and retraining for positions. And I'm wondering if there are other things we could be looking at which could be identified for us if we did an anonymous employee survey. So to save the city money, to save the taxpayers' dollars, I think it would be a responsible and a prudent thing for us to do sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Anyone else have questions?
I have a question.
Yes. Vice President Niskowski?
Thank you, Chair. These positions that we, that you're looking to fill, how long is one of the longest one that's been vacant? And how important is the continuity of of those jobs working together as a team?
So right now, on my end, one of our Application Developer Two positions has been vacant for over a year. And we've had several rounds of interviews. We've extended at least one offer. But we haven't been able to reel anyone in. And implications around that are around technology implementation timelines, you know, providing timely service to our partner departments and, you know, other, other software-related implementations and maintenance work that the the city does. So. And just extending, creating such a long vacancy just means that there's a bigger gap in tacit knowledge between, you know, potentially, we just run the risk of more turnover on the team, especially given the economy, meaning there's going to be less, you know, less overlap between existing and new and new developers on the team. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And on the Neighborhood Program Specialist Positions, Neighborhood Program Specialists-led had formerly been a contract position, and that position was vacant, I believe, it was for four or five months. And that ultimately had spurred the decision for that to become a full-time employee as the benefits could be a selling point for a prospective applicant. And and that position has been filled since then.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Two?
There is no one from the virtual public that has expressed interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one expressing interest to speak in opposition as well of this bill.
Well, at this point, the public hearing on Bill Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Two is now closed. Councilmembers, would you like to make any statements? Yes.
Not going to belabor the point. We talked earlier during committee about this. We're talking about it now. And I not only feel like that is prudent, but I think it's almost, I think it's necessary that we do not throw money at a problem. We have a problem. I don't know if it's management. I don't know if it's mission field. I don't know. I I have no idea what it is. I'm interested in finding out what that problem is. But you can't continue to look at, what is it going now, the numbers that we see with the turnovers and and then the increase in salary after increase in salary and then still feel like that we're performing at a high level. There's a problem. And we can't continue to throw money at that problem expecting it to be corrected by itself. People are still leaving. There's a problem. So I won't be supporting this bill. We have to find a solution.
Okay.
It's not money.
All right. Anyone else like to make any comments? Well, okay, well, at this point, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Two.
I'd like to move that we send Twenty-Eight Twenty-Two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
The motion is, there's been a motion in second. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Bill Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, will you please read Bill Twenty-Nine Dash Twenty-Two?
Twenty-nine twenty-two, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending System Development Charges Within Various Sections of Chapter Seventeen, Article Ten Of The South Bend Municipal Code.
Is there a committee report?
This bill was heard in Personnel and Finance this afternoon, and it was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
Is there a petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and your address and share with us key points regarding this bill.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Eric Horvatham, Public Works Director with office on thirteenth floor of this building. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'd like you to consider the substitute bill, Twenty-Nine Twenty-Two, that we sent you this afternoon. I know earlier today, we talked in committee, and and there was some discussion about some confusion in the language, and we're hoping that that will clarify that language. And so the change from this afternoon's meeting to this evening, there's, there's three changes. The first one is just the change in the Scrivener's error to take the H out of, then to make it ten. The second is adding per parcel to Section Five of seventy-nine point one. And then in Section Eighty, same, Section Five, also adding per parcel on the language. And I can read that to you here. It's, "For residential infill developments of five or fewer residential units per parcel, the system development charge shall be waived." So I'll briefly describe. The primary changes here are being made because the city's trying to encourage infill development in areas that have not developed, particularly for residential development, but also this supports commercial and and non-residential as well. And on the residential side, essentially what it's doing is waiving the SDC for both water and sewer if you have five or fewer units. And that means dwelling units on a parcel. So that was the clarification that we were trying to make. So if a developer comes So, if a developer comes in and wants to develop, let's say, 30 different vacant properties, and put some mix of single-family or duplexes or triplexes on those 30 properties, all of those will be waived, every SDC. So, I just wanted to be clear on that. If they are going to put in an apartment that has 10 units, then in that case, on a parcel, that would not be waived. They would have to pay 10 ERUs for that particular project. And then, the other component of this is for five or more units, if you are nonprofit, like a CDC, or if you're using income-based tax credits to support your project, those would also be waived. The SDCs would be waived for those projects, even if it's greater than five. And again, there's no limit to that, they can do as many parcels as they can, and the more the merrier, because the whole program point is to give us an additional tool in the toolbox to help us do infill housing. What we're seeing is that between construction costs and market value, there's a gap, and so we're just trying to give people who are willing to invest in South Bend one more tool to be able to do that. This will be combined with other tools, it will be rolling out through different departments, but this is just one change that we wanted to make, at least with the SDC ordinance to support that program. And then, on the commercial side, the primary change, or I should say, excuse me, non-residential side, so anything else? We are going to now have a process through which they can get a credit for what was there before, because theoretically, you're buying into the system, and the way we're going to figure that out, because we can't go back in time and figure out how much usage a parcel had when it was developed, let's say, some of these buildings might be, you know, vacant for 20 years, and we just don't know how much water use they use. So, we can't take a differential there. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to use as a proxy their meter size, and if we don't have their meter size, we'll use the tap size. But, so, if you had a development that was an old building, and had a 1-inch meter on it, and you're going to develop this, and you're going to put a 1-inch meter on, there will be no SDC. If you have a need, because of greater and more intense use, to make that a 2-inch meter, then you'd pay the difference between the 2-inch and the 1-inch meter on the non-residential side. So, we're trying to encourage it on the non-residential side as well, and I think those are the primary changes, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Seeing there's no questions?
No, I don't have a question. Just wanted to make a motion to accept the substitute.
Yeah. Should I make a motion to accept a substitute bill? All right, I would like to make a motion to accept the substitute bill 29-22.
So moved.
Yep, second.
Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Now, we can go to the public portion? Yes, we'll go to the public portion. Now, is there anyone here in the chambers or online wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill 29-22?
Sam Centias?
Yeah, I'll ask for you to give your name and your address.
Sam Centias with CDFI Friendly South Bend, I live at 2740 Miami Street. So, there's been a lot of talk in the community about how we do infill housing, all the challenges around that, and this is one of the great ways, whenever we think about local development and community engagement, government has two really important roles, one of them is to help, and the other one is to stay out of the way, and I think this does a lot of both. And so, this is great, listening to the community saying, you know, this has been an issue for somebody who is a small developer, wants to do something in their neighborhood, in their community, to help improve neighborhoods and stabilize our city, this is a great win. So, I thank the council members who've all spent a lot of time working to put this together through forums and talking to the community, and I support this effort, I hope all of you do too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wants to speak in favor?
There's no one from the virtual public that's expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
There's no one from the virtual public that's expressing interest in speaking in opposition of this bill.
All right, at this point, the public hearing on substitute bill 29-22 is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Horvath, for making the adjustments to the language. I've since received a couple emails back from the small-scale developers in town, they're very excited about the program, they're thankful for the clarity in the language, so that makes things much more easily understood. And the other thing that I like about this is in meetings with the women and minority businesses, this was a concern for them as well, being able to be on more of a, and even playing field with other developers. So, I thank the mayor and whoever spearheaded the initiative, this is a really exciting step forward. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Wax?
Thank you, and I've been spending some time trying to figure out my thoughts on this. What ultimately I come down to is the SDC is, it's part of enterprise fee program where everybody's supposedly paying in their cost, and what you get for what you pay for. And if we, if the city feels that the SDC charge is not necessary, then we shouldn't have the SDC charge, and I'd support that. If the SDC charge is necessary, then everybody should pay it, because this is, this is a system where it's like the utility bills, where, or actually, the fees tie in directly to utilities, expenses, and you should pay for what you use. And there are other parts of the city budget for the general fund and what we get from tax revenue that the city distributes in other ways, and tries to make policy with that. I support that, or somewhat, sometimes, but this is a part of enterprise system where it's supposed to be even across the board, and I don't think this is an area that we should be making policy. I do agree with supporting infill, I do agree with reducing bureaucracy, I do agree with reducing fees, but I just can't come around to affecting or changing an enterprise system that's based on everybody paying a fair amount and then changing that.
All right, well, thank you. Councilwoman, Vice President Niskowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mentioned this in committee earlier today, as I wanted to thank you, Eric and his team, this discussion came up about a year and a half or so ago on what can we do to help developers with housing infill, especially districts like mine in the 6th District, where it's challenging to get somebody to come in and invest dollars into the neighborhoods, because once you put up new housing, it spurs all kind of economic development within our residential neighborhoods. And I'm passionate about my district, as I know all of our district members are about their districts, but I'm really excited about this program. It helps to leverage, like you said, you know, to give those developers this incentive, and especially for our small developers to go in and improve our neighborhoods and the much-needed housing that is needed. So, I know you took a lot of time and effort in putting this together, which I appreciate it, and I totally support. If this is going to be the tool to help us get that residential infill, right now, there's, you know, so many challenges with developers, and contractors in general, just trying to hold somebody to a price line, whether it's $150 per square foot to build that house, or is it $250 per square foot? And that could change in a matter of a week or two. So, I do applaud the efforts to get that residential housing infill for single and multifamily usage, there's a huge need for it, so thank you again.
Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
I also just want to add thanks to Councilmember Niskowski for bringing this to Mr. Horvath. I think we should give credit where credit is due. So, thank you for that, Councilwoman. And, Mr. Horvath, for your work on this and getting this across the finish line, I said this in committee, I just couldn't be more excited for this. This is one tool that we'll have in the toolbox, and as I and others on council are discussing with other departments, hopefully there will be others that will help us to continue to incentivize small developers and infill development. Thank you.
Councilwoman White?
Just wanted to say thank you, and I can recall, I don't know, Eric, you remember my telephone call to you when a church was building a daycare center, and they had no awareness of what the cost would be for, you know, installing, you know, the sewers and everything else. And I really remember how you worked with them to make sure that they could move forward, so I definitely appreciate that. And this is a situation that not only our city, but other cities are finding themselves in, when you look at infill and working with small developers to ensure that the housing needs are met, and this is a way in which to really come up with incentives that will help them to do that, and I'm quite sure that we'll begin to see some advancement in terms of having affordable housing within our community.
And I would just like to just echo all the comments. I would first of all like to thank Councilwoman Niskowski for leading the charge on this, and for making aware and bringing it to fruition, and working with Eric Horvath. Again, we got to give our people hope, and so, for small developers to be able to have hope that they can do this, in areas, there are areas of the 1st District that what it costs to build the house, there's such a big gap, and so, whatever we can do to help incentivize people to want to build and want to do things in these areas in our community, that's what we're supposed to be doing as the city government, and so, thank you. And at this portion...
So, yeah, let me, before you get down...
I gave you an opportunity, you turned it down.
But you're not going to run me over like that.
No, I'm not.
I take offense to that. We had several town hall meetings for months at a time, over the radio, the news, the whole nine, we had the same discussion, and somehow, some way, it's she and Niskowski's show. And I think that we all want the same thing, you understand what I'm saying? And I'm not, look, look, I'm not upset that you said that...
This is what I'll do.
But no, I just understand how you, and some of your colleagues, just to sit up and to say...
Hold on, I said in committee meeting that I was in one of your town hall meetings.
That's fine, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, so...
That's what the young man that just came into the microphone was referring to.
Okay.
But I just understand how someone that refused to participate...
I'm calling a point of order, please.
You can keep talking. How, you have a person that just continue to...
Mr. Davis, I gave you an opportunity to speak, you didn't...
But you're not going to be allowed to run me over.
No, I'm not running you over, you're not going to run me over either.
And that's the last time you're going to be allowed to run, I think that you're going to run me over.
I'm telling you, I gave you an opportunity, you didn't want to speak.
That's not what I'm saying to you, I'm saying quit running me over.
So, I will change my statement and say that...
No, you don't have to change anything, but I'm going to tell you, you're not going to even run me over no more.
That you, you did hold a town hall meeting, and one of the people at...
And I brought the stuff back to the council meeting about what needed to change as well.
It's hard to work with the council.
But you're not going to continue to run me over.
It's hard, you're getting upset.
I don't need your hand clap or your applause, I just don't want you to disrespect me or run me over.
You brought it up, so I'm going to, I'm going to make the record, I said it in committee meeting, I'll say it again, we were in one of your town hall meetings, and one of the developers said it's hard to do work with the city, so this is a way of making it easier for people to do work with the city, and hopefully this will help to bring some hope to developers, so that we can infill, take care of the infill, and be able to start building affordable housing, because we need it. Thank you. Troy Warner, I forgot that you were online, would you like to say anything? All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill 29-22.
I make a motion that substitute bill 29-22 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Substitute bill 29-22 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right, the motion carries.
Okay, the full council is now back in session. This is the portion of the meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. So, we are going to start with Bills 21, 22. Clerk Jones, could you please give that bill a third reading?
Yes. 21, 22, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Properties Located at 1102, 1106, 1110, 1114, 1118, 1122, 1126, and 1130, McCartney Street, Councilmaning District Number One, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a committee report from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill 21, 22?
Yes. Bill 21, 22 comes from the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 21, 22.
I would like to make it... I'll second the motion for the adoption of substitute bill 21-22.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 21, 22 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 22, 22 a third reading?
22, 22, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to Vacate the Following Described Property, Alley East Side of South Bend Avenue, Between Corby Boulevard and Camp House Street. I make a motion for the passage, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lee, I do need a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill 22, 22.
Yes. Bill 22-22 comes from the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
I now make the motion for the passage of Bill 22-22.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion inseconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 22, 22 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 25, 22 a third reading?
25, 22, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to trans, to, for budget transfers for various departments within the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the year 2022.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding the bill?
Yes. Bill 25-22 comes from the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding the bill?
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 25, 22 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 26, 22 a third reading? Clerk Jones, will you please give bill 26-22 a third reading?
26-22, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2022. Of 1,358,164 dollars from the Parks and Recreation Fund 201, $9,000 from the Economic Development State Grants Fund 21210, $90,000 from the Gift Donation Be- Bequest Fund Number 217, $900,000 from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund Number 226, $115,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund Number 230, $376,118 from the COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $5,507 from the MVH Restricted Fund Number 266, $410,819 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center Fund Number 279, $50,000 from the Police Federal Drug Enforcement Fund Number 299, $414,824 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund Number 404, $3,075,000 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund Number 408, $1,298,000 from the Professional Sports Convention Development Area Fund Number 413, and $129,726 from the Solid Waste Capital Fund Number 611.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding bill 26-22?
Yes. Bill 26-22 comes from the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, it's been a motion made and seconded. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 26-22 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give bill 27-22 a third reading?
27-22, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10816-21, which fixed maximum wages of Teamster employees per calendar years 2022, 2023, and 2024 to add a provision for a city residency incentive.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding bill 27-22?
Yes. Bill 27-22 was heard in the committee of whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding bill 27-22.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 27-22 has passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give bill 28-22 a third reading?
28-22, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10817-21, which fixed maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend for calendar year 2022 to amend the 2022 maximum salaries for four full-time positions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding bill 28-22?
Yes. Bill 28-22 was heard in the committee of the whole and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding bill 28-22.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 28-22 has passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give bill 29-22 a third reading?
29-22, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending system development charges within various sections of Chapter 17, Article 10 of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding bill 29-22?
Yes. Bill 29-22 was heard in the committee of the whole and it now comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding bill 29-22.
Move for passage.
For substitute bill 29-22 for passage.
Second.
The bill has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
This is 28-22, right?
29-22.
I'm sorry. I mean, aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Bill 29-22 has passed. Okay, we're gonna move on to our resolutions. So, this is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk and a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred. For advisory review and recommendation is then given. This also requires a public hearing. During the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you give your name and address and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes with those speaking in favor going first, followed by opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. So, our first bill is Resolution 22-29. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the bill?
22-29, a resolution of the South Bend Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reconfirming the adoption of Deculatory Resolution Number 4833-19, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3585 Morale Court, South Bend, Indiana 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Toyo Psycho North America, Inc.
And I have had a request from if we could hear bill Resolution 22-30 together with the first bill?
Yes, I would make that motion.
And that has been a motion by councilman.
Second.
So, there's a motion on the floor to hear 22-30 and 22-29 together for the purpose of the presentation and they will be voted on separately. Could you call the roll call, please, Miss Clerk Jones?
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
He's not in the room.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm sorry. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And I believe you have to give 22-30 a third reading, please.
Okay. 22-30, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, confirming the grant of certain real property tax abatement deductions and waiving non-compliance for property commonly known as 3585 Morale Court, South Bend, Indiana 46628, for Toyo Psycho North America, Inc.
Thank you. And I see that our presenter is here. If you could state your name and address and...
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Caleb Bauer, Acting Director of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Before you are two resolutions, both related to Toyo Psycho North America, which is a cut-wire shot peening media company with a distribution facility near Blackthorne Golf Course. And the first, 22-29, is a request to extend the designation period for the existing personal property tax abatement at their new facility for investment in new equipment. Because of shipping costs and current economic conditions, the investment in the new equipment has been delayed, but the company still plans to make that investment. And so, we're just requesting that the designation period be extended from November of 2022 to November of 2024. And then, the second bill, 22-30, is a waiver of non-compliance for the real property tax abatement that was already approved by council. The company failed to submit Form 322 to the St. Joseph County Auditor's Office for 2021 and 2022 and therefore was unable to take advantage of the benefits of the abatement. They have filed the correct forms and their taxes are up to date. And the company has completed and exceeded their investment commitments as a part of the abatement. They committed to $1.6 million in investment and have completed $2.1 million in investment in the construction of their new facility. Additionally, they had committed to retain four full-time employees and add one new employee and they have added three full-time employees instead. And Larry Katanzright from Toyo Psycho is here to answer any questions you may have.
My name's Larry Katanzright. My address is 3585 Morale Court, South Bend, Indiana. We have to take responsibility for failing to file the correct form for the auditor's office. As I stated earlier today, we had, there's a myriad of forms that need to be filed in a myriad of offices. We have to file with the Treasury, we have to, and all of these have to be separate. And it was pretty confusing. And we did miss one and that was to the auditor's office. We did get some notifications, but I think Councilwoman White had a very good suggestion this afternoon on if you're involved in an abatement such as this. It's just like a one-page, the date that this is due, the form number that's due, what office it goes to. Because there's multiple, there were multiple forms that went to multiple offices. And included in that, we actually had to file with Pro Chiswick because they were doing an oversight. So, you know, we still have to take responsibility, but it was confusing. The setback, obviously COVID, when it hit, we had started this program before COVID hit. The building, it was recommended that we stop the building. We did not. We went ahead and we spent actually more on the building than we had committed for. The problem is the equipment that comes to us. Well, actually, all of our materials do come by ocean container. And in November of 2020, we were paying $3,200. In fact, I actually brought bills, if you wanna see it, because you won't believe the difference. To move that equipment here, it was 22, it was, we need 10 ocean containers. Each ocean container in December, or November of 2019 was about $3,200. Today, and in this, before we were able to get the machinery here, the same container is $22,000. So, we went from being able to move two machines here, and the machines are about $300,000. So, it was $30,000 to move those two machines here, 10 containers, to $220,000. And it just didn't work. So, we had to push that back. We actually have plans on bringing that, and additional equipment in. But for now, we asked for the extension because of the situation around the freight and hopefully it comes back down. Can I answer any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much. Is there any questions from the council?
Okay.
Councilman Warner, any questions? Okay. Then at this point, I'm gonna move to the public portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of bill 22-29?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against bill 22-29?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak against bill 22-29.
Okay. And is there anyone, since we heard these together, I'll go into, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of 22-30?
There is no one expressing interest to speak in favor of 22-30.
And is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 22-30?
There is no one present or virtually wishing to speak in opposition of bill 22-30.
Okay. Then at this time, we're gonna close the public portion. Coming back to council, do you have any comments on either one of these bills? No?
Thank you for investing in the First District.
And I do, I did forget to ask Councilwoman Tomas Morgan if there was a committee report from Community Investment on 22-30.
Yes. This was heard in Community Investment Committee this afternoon and comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to ask, you had offered tours. Do we contact you if we wanna look at the facility?
Yes, actually, we invited everybody from, we're very proud of the building. And it's a very significant, significant in automobile manufacturing and in aerospace. And nobody here knows what we do and we'd be more than happy. People, I think, Councilwoman, you looked it up and said, "I have no idea what you're doing."
But we're glad you're here.
If I could, I would like to make a statement. As best as I can tell, well, we bought property that they hadn't moved any property in that area for 19 years. And there was some economic development pushes, and that, Caleb, I think I'm right on that, right? Okay. And he might not even know this. The other equipment that we want to bring in, we need to expand. So, I'm already trying to buy more land. So, the new equipment needs more property. Well, guess what? After nothing happened in that park for 19 years, the land next to me is gone. Did you know that? I need two more acres and I'm now negotiating with the new owner of the new property. What, it's 14 acres, right, Caleb?
I don't know.
14 acres. We bought four and I told Christian Everett, "You watch. Once we start building, that'll prime the pump." And one year later, it's gone. And it's a, do you know what's going on? Food processing.
Yeah, I think this...
Yeah. I not, maybe not be at liberty to say, but I think it's 100,000 square feet. We built 26, so, guys, it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this point of the meeting, then, I'm going to ask if there's a motion in regard to bill 22-29.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and it's been seconded. Okay, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll for Bill twenty-two dash twenty-nine?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-two dash twenty-nine has been adopted, and I would ask the same to entertain a motion for, uh, bills, that'd be twenty-two thirty.
Make a motion for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two dash thirty.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There has been a motion, and it's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll for Bill twenty-two thirty?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-two dash thirty has been adopted, and thank you for coming to the meeting this Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one was tabled until July the eleventh. Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-two was tabled until, is that the same one? Yeah, July eleventh. Moving to Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Yes. Twenty-two thirty-three, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appointing an agent or negotiator and an advisory common council negotiating team to represent the common council in the upcoming South Bend Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Thirty-six negotiations.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wax, is your committee report?
Yes, this resolution was heard in Health and Public Safety earlier today, and it comes before the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. As far as being a presenter for this bill, this comes, is a normal practice for, for the negotiations of the police department, FOP, Teamsters. So this is really just a resolution that outlines who the people are that will be on the negotiating team, and which council members will be there and report back to the full council on how the contract negotiations ended up. So we don't have, it's mostly budgetary that we look at. We don't really have any, is that correct, my phrasing, that we really don't have any, any influence on what they negotiate, but rather bring back to the council as a means to report?
Correct.
So at this point, is there any questions from the council regarding the resolution?
Yes, it is. My question is, if we don't have any impact on one way or the other, the negotiation of any agreement, why are we there? We had this discussion before because we talked about you being there and getting fees, and you even said yourself that you will be speaking against your own pocket, but you probably shouldn't be there because there is no reason for us to be there. So my question, we're going through this process all over again, year later, and I'm still going to ask that question. Why are we there if we do not impact anything that goes on at a negotiation table?
The impact is on the budget, on salaries, on fringe benefits. Someone has to report back to the council for the budget purposes.
So is it one person, or is it a team of people?
It is a team of people that's nominated and historically has gone for purposes of, do you need an attorney to do that? My answer stays as it was the last time you answered the question. No, an attorney is not necessary. It can be done by council members. Historically, this is the way it's done.
Well, I'm aware of that, sir. I participate on many negotiation tables and teams. I'm just asking for some clarity, because it's like this big thing that we're doing, and by conversation, it's turning into, we shouldn't even be there.
And this is the, these are the instructions I was given in drafting the resolution.
I got it. I understand your role, sir. Really, I do. Thank you.
Councilman Wax?
I appreciate Attorney Palmer's candor in saying that an attorney isn't necessary. I would say that the, in my experience from negotiations last year, having somebody who was consistently there is extremely important. And while the council members all made efforts to be there to as many meetings as possible due to conflicting schedules, the consistency wasn't, and I'm speaking about myself most of all, but the consistency wasn't there, and to have somebody who's there throughout is very helpful. And while I may agree that an attorney isn't necessary, I do think that having, and I'm biased there, but having an attorney is helpful. There are aspects of contracts, aspects of law, that, like you mentioned, Mr. Davis, probably not legally necess, you know, we're not dealing on the legal level, so it's probably not necessary for us, but having somebody who can understand every asset of, every aspect of the negotiations, I think is helpful.
Eli, I was, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't be there. I honor the fact that the council is there. As a matter of fact, when I did serve on negotiating teams, I was able to help get things across and put it on paper so that it could be negotiated. So I value the fact that, but what I'm bumping up against and what I'm questioning is the idea that we don't have any say-so, we don't have anything to do with anything that goes on there. That's what I'm questioning, and that's what I'm challenging. So I'm not challenging the fact that we should or shouldn't be there. We should absolutely be there. We're going to approve the budget, right? Or, or not. But if, if, if in fact, the, the idea is saying that we don't have anything to say or do with negotiation, then why are we there? That's what I'm questioning.
Thank you, Councilman Wax. I appreciate your comments. Do you have anything further?
No.
Okay. Is there any other council members that has a comment at this time?
Nope.
I guess what I would say, being that I'm on the negotiation team as well, is if you don't have somebody there, you don't know what's going on. And then the council would be like, "What's going on with this negotiation?" So I think it's, it's, it's really very important for us to have somebody there on a consistent basis. So at this point, we're going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone from, or Councilman Warner, did you have any input or question? No?
No.
Okay, is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two thirty-three.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak against Bill twenty-two thirty-three.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we're going to come back to the council member. Is there any comments this time?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion in regards to Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three?
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three has been adopted. We're going to go on to our next resolution, which is Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Twenty-two thirty-four, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of scrap metal junk dealers' recycling operation licenses for calendar year 2022 pursuant to section one, pursuant to section four fifty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you, Councilman Wax. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Bill twenty-two thirty-four was heard in front of Health and Public Safety Committee earlier today, and it comes before the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, and the presenter, I believe, was Clerk Jones?
Yes. Okay, there were two applications submitted to the ordinance violation bureau. The applications came from Big Building Auto Parts, thirty-seven-hundred South Gertrude Street, and Omni Source LLC, seventy-five seventy-five West Jefferson Street in Fort Wayne. However, as Councilmember Tomas Morgan pointed out, the business is on West Prairie Street in South Bend. The applications went, they complied with the protocol process and were approved by the police, fire, and code enforcement departments.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from council? Seeing none, oh, Councilman Warner, you have a question?
No question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you motioned that you had a question. Okay, then at this point, we're going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
There's no one expressing interest to speak against Bill twenty-two thirty-four as well.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll come back to the council. Any comments from the council members? Nope. Okay, then is there a motion in regard to Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four?
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Excuse me, Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-four has been adopted. Okay, well, now we're going to move on to the bills that are on first reading. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill thirty dash twenty-two a first reading?
Yes. Thirty, thirty twenty-two, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at thirteen-thirty-five East Ireland and forty-four twenty-seven South Brookton, Councilman and District Number Five in the City of South Bend.
Thank you. I'd like to make, entertain a motion to send Bill thirty dash twenty-two to the South Bend Plan Commission for public hearing on July eighteenth, and the ZNA Committing Committee for Council and for public hearing in third reading on July twenty-fifth.
So moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Uh, thank you. So at this point, we are going to go on to our unfinished business, where I'm going to refer to Attorney Palmer to explain the unfinished business with the certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you, Vice President. This is an informational item. If you recall, last council meeting, schedule was set for this appeal. The petitioner's brief was submitted today. The Historical Preservation Committee's brief was scheduled to be submitted, I believe, Wednesday of next week, and the council is going to hear the appeal at its meeting on July eleventh. It's under unfinished business because the council did take action on it at the last meeting. It's not doing anything at this meeting with it, and it should be completed by the next meeting.
And you said we'll hear that under unfinished business, the same?
Correct.
Thank you so much, Mr. Palmer, for explaining all that. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, then we're going to move on. Is there any new business?
I just have a couple of announcements, and I will follow up with an email to the full council, but in communication with our committees and department heads, on July sixth, we will hold, I will hold a Community Investment Committee meeting. We'll have a report on the city's sustainability initiatives and the climate action, progress towards our climate action plan, and also an update on the city's comprehensive plan and that process, that planning process. And then on Jul, the week after that, on July thirteenth, we are holding Innovation Technology Committee meeting for a mid-year check-in. We'll have updates on the open Wi-Fi, broadband, and other implementations that they've had.
Councilwoman White?
Tomas Morgan, what time is that meeting on the court?
Um, we're, we're still setting that, but it's at the end of the day, either five-fifteen or five-thirty later to the end.
Residential neighborhood is hosting a meeting at four o'clock to start the discussion on the project.
Okay, that works out.
It's just one hour.
That works out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other new business to come before the floor?
I'm not sure what this is new business or not, but is there any way that we can get an update about the tape case at next council meeting or the following one?
I can give you an update right now.
Oh, yeah.
It's sitting in the Court of Appeals, waiting for them to make a decision.
Well, how long is that?
Uh, it's been fully briefed since, I believe, October, so I have no way of knowing when the decision will be made.
What is the timeline on that usually?
Usually, it's within six months, so we're way beyond the normal timeline.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we're going to move on to privilege of the floor. At this time, I'll read the statement. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. So individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has already heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the administration for review on topics assigned, shall be responded to accordingly at the next scheduled meeting. Is there anyone here to address that wishes to speak on the privilege of the floor?
There is no one from the public that is expressing interest to speak in privilege of the floor.
And I see no one present, so at this time, if there is no other business before us, I think we stand adjourned.